It is seven twenty-five. The City Council meeting has called an order. Would you please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The seat please. For the record, we're starting at seven twenty-five this evening because we had technical difficulties with our live streaming rather than our seven o'clock hour as usual. Roll call please, Mr. Crum.
Mr. Robb.
Here.
Mr. Roberts.
Here.
Mr. Gates.
Here.
Mr. Martin.
Present.
Mr. McGlocklin.
Here.
I will entertain the motion to dispense with the reading of the Journal from May eighteenth, two thousand and twenty. Second. We have a motion by Mr. Roberts and a second by Mr. Martin to dispense with the reading of the Journal from May eighteenth, two thousand and twenty. Discussion. Roll call please.
Mr. Martin.
Yea.
Mr. McGlocklin.
Yea.
Mr. Robb.
Yea.
Mr. Roberts.
Yea.
Mr. Gates.
Yea.
A motion passes. Now comes the time for public comment, which we've invited public to comment by email or written letters to the City Hall by four P M. on Mondays, or maybe the councilmen have received any comments to be shared during this time, or maybe during a piece of legislation. All right, we'll move on then. Reports from standing and special committees, Community and Economic Development Committee, Councilman McGlocklin.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we did meet a couple hours ago at the City Hall, and so I do have a few things to brief. Division of Fair Housing for Ohio, the representative will be at the next city's city staff meeting, which will probably be next Thursday, or the third Thursday in June, and the mayor will give us a report on how that went later after that meeting. From the Historical Preservation Committee, Christine DeDrain submitted a report, and so they met twice recently, the seventeenth of April and the fifteenth of May. Some of the topics, the National Register of Historic Places signage was ordered and is to be placed east of the bandstand when it does arrive, and dedication will be planned. Next, they hope to have a breakfast meeting in July for groups to get to know the commission, pending the situation, if things open up. And third, work will begin soon on the digitized history of the eighteen seventy-two engine house. And finally, the commission approved a certificate of appropriateness for a mural to be painted on the west wall of the Marvin Memorial Library. So I'd like to thank Cynthia Drain for her report. And next, concerning CHIP, Shelby is administering that and will be commencing at the end of June to start receiving applications. That includes Shelby in Richland County, but does not include Mansfield proper. The C I C, Community Improvement Corporation, they have a new website. It is ShelbyCIC dot com. On the site, they talk about their projects, for example, the downtown revitalization project that's upcoming and bicycle dating. Currently, the downtown revitalization project is in phase one engineering at this point. The Pat Ford meets weekly. Transportation issues for community, we need taxi driver. That position is Tuesday through Friday, eight to four P M. Currently, we do not have taxi support at this point. And our community economic development liaison, Jessica Griffin. She wanted me to briefly a couple of things here. On Fridays, she's been participating in Zoom calls with the Shelby businesses and Shelby Foundation. Shelby's new website is now live at this point. The AMP, the American Municipal Power, their newsletter email we subscribe to, they have been sharing some information in the most recent email newsletter to other communities for possible sites for expansion with available space and shovel-ready projects. For example, the one that was listed in the most recent newsletter concerned property on Technology Parkway, it's thirty-two acres, some light industrial. The utilities available on the site are listed as water, sewer, electric, fiber, and natural gas. And it also talks about the location to a state route, the proximity to state routes and highways, and it goes into a little bit of history of our community. That is all I have at this time. Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. McGlocklin. Comments or questions for Mr. McGlocklin and his report, public report. Now, moving forward, Public Works and General Operations Committee, you did not.
We did not meet, yeah.
Thank you, sir. We'll move on to reports of city officials, the mayor's report. I'd like to deliver a proclamation this evening. As I read through it, you'll understand it's connected with Richmond County Chamber of Commerce and Economic Development. Whereas Richmond County and the city of Shelby have been deeply impacted by the effects of the COVID nineteen crisis, and whereas we honor the work of our frontline employees, healthcare workers, emergency responders, and others who have bravely helped to up this crisis, and whereas we honor the work of our local residents and businesses have done to protect each other during the crisis, and whereas we recognize the deep economic impact that has been felt by our local business community and their employees, and whereas we know that small businesses have been particularly impacted by the crisis and are vital to our area's economic health and vitality, and whereas the people of Richmond County are grateful to the small businesses of the area for their generous contribution to the quality of life we all enjoy, and whereas we know that our local small business community needs extra support as they recover from the crisis and adapt to new regulations, and whereas we know that our local small business community needs, I'm sorry, next paragraph. Whereas we believe that a resilient community must work together to overcome challenges, and whereas we join with the Richmond Area Chamber and Economic Development, the Destination Mansfield, Richmond County, Downtown Mansfield Incorporated, and other municipalities in the county to support our local business community, and now therefore I, Stephen L. Shea, Mayor of the City of Shelby, Ohio, hereby proclaim the month of June two thousand and twenty as Richmond County's Strong Month. In the city of Shelby, Ohio, I urge all citizens of Shelby to join the rest of Richmond County and support our local business community as much as possible this month. We encourage you to eat local, shop local, and support local businesses. And witness whereof, I have herein to set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Shelby, Ohio, to be affixed this first day of June in the year of our Lord, two thousand and twenty. Very, very grateful for the work of Richmond Area Chamber of Commerce and how they've kept our local businesses informed and inspired over these past, actually, two months. There is a plan to go around to each of our municipalities in the county to have like a ribbon cutting to celebrate what is going on in each community as communities begin to open up. And so we'll be participating in that in the weeks to come. In fact, then, that'll be June the eighth here in Shelby, ten o'clock. I'll push that out for those who could, at a distance, enjoy that ribbon cutting event. As Mr. McGlocklin mentioned, the new website is now up and running today, and I have not had an opportunity to go through page by page, but it is really sharp and state-of-the-art, as they say. And I want to thank all those I've worked on. I don't want to leave anyone out, but I know Mr. Geis, Mr. Ensmann, Jessica Griffin, myself. Can you think of any of us on our side that thinks we go, worked with Rochelle at Hipa Creative to fine tune this? So our two major websites, as you say, the city and the Health Department, there are websites that we can be proud of, and I'm sure will be a great resource for our citizens and prospective site selectors as they visit the city of Shelby. So great work by all, and it's got really a lot of neat features, very user-friendly. So thanks to one and all. Mr. Ensmann informed us that last Thursday he had a kickoff meeting with Vantage Point. They're conducting the broadband feasibility study, planning to mail out email questionnaires or surveys or emailing as well over the next couple of weeks, within the next couple of weeks. So that'll be a, that'll be a great step in determining the feasibility of broadband, just more broadband in Shelby. Very excited to see the Enterprise Zone agreement and a piece of legislation this evening, and you all have the details there of this expansion of Lloyd Green Bar Company. This is a homegrown company, a Shelby graduate, and just, it's a great story of scarlet gray here in Shelby, so very, very happy for this example of business retention and expansion in a very challenging environment. So good stuff that I look forward to in just a few minutes. Mr. Geis will probably bring this as part of his report, the West Main Street Sewer Project. Ending its final stages, giving more details on the lift station. I think within, within a month or so, I guess we'll have the lift station operating. Currently working with Mr. Geis, Mr. Ensmann, Mr. Easter, and Councilman Martin to produce a piece of legislation that will enable us to provide an equitable and fair financial proposition on behalf of parcel owners who did not qualify for lateral installation assistance grants from the state. And so that is going to be a very challenging piece of legislation. And Councilman Gates, or anyone else who would like to give us some advice on that, this will truly be a team work effort to produce a very innovative piece of legislation to, to, to help folks out there on West Main Street. Just had some things scribbled down here. I think that's, I think that's about it for me. Does anyone have any comments or questions for me in regard to my report? Mr. Gates.
Mayor, your, your assessment of this piece of legislation on West Main Street being very challenging is, is correct. The city charter contains the sum total of the assessment process, and that was adjudicated back in, in the early nineties when the city put in the sanitary sewer on North Gannell Street. Someone challenged our procedure and, and, and lost. The courts ruled in the city's favor, that the charter has the sum total. So it's beyond our capacity to either add to or subtract to that, that process. And I think what we're talking about are some credits. And so the city has to tread very cautiously here because bond counsel has to certify that the city followed the process as outlined in our charter in order to, to, you know, to. People will not buy the bonds unless they can get this bond counsel certification, that they meet the requirements to be tax exempt. So indeed, you're correct, it's going to be a challenge. I know of no provision in the charter dealing with assessments that allow for a credit, such as what's being considered. Now, I'm completely sympathetic to the situation out there that, that people have, but, you know, we can't let our sympathy for people to make us blind to what the requirements are under the law. My suggestion would be to get bond counsel in on this discussion right away.
Advice well taken.
That's, that's the best thing I can say at this point. But again, it's beyond our capacity to add to or to subtract from the procedure that's in the charter.
Thank you. Any comments or questions for me? All right. Moving forward to Mr. Crum, Director of Finance.
Thank you. We are sort of slowly getting back on our feet as, as our most of the departments around the city. The, the tax window is open now. People are allowed to come into City Hall and bring us their, their tax returns, and the, the staff will prepare them for, for folks if they would like. We do still encourage you to mail your tax returns in because there's just fewer people in City Hall. We can do things just as well via mail as, as we can in person. But there is staff there. We are still doing a sort of a split shift type of deal, so if we find that, that we are lacking capacity, then we will, we'll add the, the second person back on the office full time. But until then, we'll remain conservative with that approach. That's really the, the biggest thing going on in our department right now. We're sort of in, in a bit of a lull before the next round of, of reporting and stuff is, is due. And I should, in the next couple of days, have some of April's, or I'm sorry, of May's financial numbers so we can kind of start to see how, how the effects are for last month, and I'll be sharing that with Finance Committee as, as soon as I can. That's really all I have right now, though.
Thank you, Mr. Crum. Any comments or questions for Mr. Crum in regard to his report? All right, if not, we'll move forward. Mr. Easter's not here this evening, and Mr. Joe Geis.
Excuse me, my head.
Yes.
At the last council, I'm thinking that Mr. Martin had requested Mr. Easter's presence.
That's correct. And I failed to notify him.
Okay. Well, that happens. I think to the greatest extent possible, the law director should be present in every unit of City Council.
All right, very good. Thank you. Mr. Geis.
Thank you, Mayor. I know we've talked about the website that's done here, but if, once you guys get into it, if you see anything that needs correction, just email me and we'll make sure we can get that taken care of. And it is a lot nicer for everyone to use. Our downtown rehab, you have seen the surveyors been out there doing the work and getting things moving on that. And as the mayor said, our, our West Main Street Sewer, I talked with Mr. Hurst. He's got about two, two and a half more weeks to get the electric all done for, with the generator and everything for the lift station. And then the contractor will do his testing on it and so forth, and then we'll be complete. And we still have to go through our punch list of everything, you know, with the road work and the grading and so forth, so. That's where we're at.
Thank you, Mr. Geis. Are there any comments or questions for Mr. Geis in regard to his report? If not, we'll move forward then to new business. New business that we brought for council this evening. There is a new business, unfinished business, future use of Main Street Fire Station, still waiting to hear from community on the, 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 with any ownership, and so which direction I've got to go there. Mr. Dairy Maintenance, fifty-nine West Main Street, I did reach out to the owner. Have not heard back from him, but originally the intent was that kind of as the COVID cloud sort of cleared, he was hoping to get back into moving that property. So I'm, I'm hoping we're kind of in that stage. So when I hear something from him, I'll let you know. Mr. Geis.
Mayor, I noticed on my way to council that there's continues to be pieces of brick on the sidewalk, and, you know, before there were flakes of bricks. There was a pretty good sized piece of brick in some sidewalk. Now, I don't know when that may have come down, but it did come down.
We'll check into that.
It may have been just a glance, because I didn't want to hit someone or something, but it looked almost like about an eighth of a brick. So more than just a, a small piece.
Right, yeah, and I said it was kind of that flaking and.
It's gone beyond flake.
Okay, all right. Thank you, we'll check into that. And then unfinished business. If not, we'll move forward then to legislation.
Orders number twelve, two thousand and twenty, amending section one thousand four hundred and eighty-two point zero six of chapter one thousand four hundred and eighty-two, swimming pools of a codified ordinance in the city of Shelby.
Move for third reading.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Robb and a second by Mr. Roberts for the third reading of orders number twelve, two thousand and twenty, discussion. Roll call please.
Mr. Martin.
Yea.
Mr. McGlocklin.
Yea.
Mr. Robb.
Yea.
Mr. Roberts.
Yes.
Yea.
Mr. Gates.
Yea.
Orders number twelve, two thousand and twenty, passes as third reading.
Move for passage, your.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Robb and a second by Mr. Roberts for the passage of orders number twelve, two thousand and twenty, discussion. Roll call please.
Mr. Martin.
Yea.
Mr. McGlocklin.
Yea.
Mr. Robb.
Yea.
Mr. Roberts.
Yea.
Mr. Gates.
Yea.
Orders number twelve, two thousand and twenty, passes.
Orders number fifteen, two thousand and twenty, amending section two hundred and seventy-six point zero three, Investigation of Complaints, Correction, Reports to Council.
Move for first reading.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Martin and a second by Mr. Roberts for the first reading, orders number fifteen, two thousand and twenty, discussion. Mr. Martin.
Couple things have come to my attention, you know, dealing with how the Health Department deals with complaints and investigations. The main, the main problem being that there is not a standardized reporting mechanism, nor storage for those reports on any complaints that come for the Health Department. I shouldn't say any complaints, but certain complaints do. We notices, we have a, you know, we have a reporting mechanism for that and a couple other things, but in large, there's just not a standardized process, and there's no real good record to even see previous, previous behaviors or previous violations, et cetera. And so this puts into place kind of a reporting mechanism to just strengthen that protocol at the Health Department. And it's something that is badly needed for due process for all those involved who have to deal with complaints to the Department.
Mr. Robb.
Could I be added as co-sponsor this way, please?
Sure. I did a motion, Mr. Crum. For the discussion, Mr. Gates.
Thank you, Mayor. At meetings of the Safety Committee, Mrs. Conrad is very diligent in, in reporting to committees to what, what's going on with nuisance complaints and what have you. So, you know, I think there is accountability there. I, I, I have a question, first of all, was Dr. Chala, the Health Commissioner, is he then, was he given the courtesy of seeing this piece of legislation?
I believe the first he saw was this evening at our staff meeting of the Health Department.
The other concern I have is that, to the extent that HIPAA may be an issue here. Dr. Chala, of course, is a, is a physician, is stable, and is under the provisions of HIPAA, so there may be some conflict between this ordinance and, and HIPAA, so. But, Mayor, you're the, you are the de facto health board. I'll let you look into that and report back to us, but those are concerns that I have. The other concern I have is that this, this may be a chilling, have a chilling effect on people who wish to report nuisances and what have you in their neighborhoods. Their fear of, of a neighbor who is vindictive, people who want to take, you know, make retribution on others. So that's a concern that I have about this, this ordinance, the, the provision about, you know, making things a public record. The, the Health Department does comply with the public records, you know, to the extent that they interface with HIPAA. So, but again, Mayor, if you would check into, and I think specifically, have to ask Dr. Chala, you know, how do HIPAA and this piece of legislation, how do they mesh? Or do they match?
Mr. Robb.
Well, even police reports are public records and complaints and certain information in police reports. Most information in police reports, including complaints, must be released in public, on a public record basis. Anybody that, that files a complaint should be aware that there's that possibility, and whether or not that's going to keep them filing a complaint, I guess it's up to them. I don't see, in my experience, that we've ever really had a problem with that. And there's also processes in place to protect complainants that feel that they may be subjected to violence or, or repercussions, so I don't see that as an argument here.
Mr. Martin.
Worth knowing, I also looked into whistleblower protections, especially for employees that would be filing a response to an employer, and the law director, I actually had within the legislation originally a whistleblower clause, but the law director said it wasn't, it wasn't needed. In fact, it actually might have watered because existing whistleblower legislation that's in the Ohio Revise Code would take precedence in those situations. So I alleviated my concerns there. I did check into some of the HIPAA stuff as well, and that, as far as I saw and was told, that doesn't apply, but I'm surely willing to take more information into account. Another issue that was brought up by the administration to me is, and this is, was in the original language, it says that the Health Commissioner shall investigate, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. But usually, it is the, the assistant that does the investigative, the investigating. And so, Mayor, I didn't know if you had language that we could use to amend that to allow for the assistant by ordinance to be able to do the investigation that they're already doing.
I would, it seems to me you say the Health Commissioner or his or her designate, then that frees up any, it could be our corrective person, could be our sanitarium, could be myself. Dr. Chala is actually the Health Commissioner. So I would, I think we have language, some of that, some other areas, where it's like the mayor or his designate, or his or her designate. It would seem to me that would fit here.
Mayor, I move to amend the after both instances of the Health Commissioner to insert or his or her designate.
After both instances, you're making the motion to add the words or his or her designate. Is there a sentence?
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Martin, a second by Mr. Roberts to add the language in the, in that clause there after the words Health Commissioner in both instances, to add the words or his or her designate in both those instances. Discussion. Roll call please.
Mr. Martin.
Yea.
Mr. McGlocklin.
Yea.
Mr. Robb.
Yea.
Mr. Roberts.
Yea.
Mr. Gates.
Yea.
That motion to amend passes. If you please, council, I could just give a few words informationally, or I could end by the chair with Mr. McGlocklin, whatever you play, but I'm not ending it to debate, but just gives back on information. Would be all right?
Good question. You're, you're presenting information, you're not advocating.
Correct. And, and I think we all know, giving a piece of legislation a first reading gives us the opportunity to do continued homework in here from, from. gives us the opportunity to do continued homework in here from, from constituents and so forth. Uh, we actually do have, you know, within the department, a complaint policy that we do follow, uh, and I'll try to bring that exhibit at, at our next meeting so we can see that. And those complaints then are registered on, on some, um, Department of Health, Detective Second, there's no, the COVID nineteen things don't really through as far a loop, I say us being Beth and Tiffany and myself. Um, I, I would say, in this regard, I don't know, any employee within the city works any harder than Beth Conrad. She do very hard work, very diligent, very detail oriented, uh, many, many, uh, like twenty, twenty-five years of, of public health experience. Uh, she takes her job seriously. Uh, when we're speaking of keeping proper records, that's, uh, the records had been kept of complaints, the COVID complaints in particular, but most of those were handwritten in a notebook, uh, when the call came in, and, and her handwriting was only she could read, um, and, uh, then the follow-up, what was done, uh, whether she followed up on or I followed up on the complaints. So, we did not have a form, we did not have a COVID nineteen complaint form, uh, that would, uh, we would change our complaint policy, uh, manual there, not manual, but in that documentation. Uh, we did, as a, as the staff, the Department of Health staff, uh, received one of those from Dr. Chala this evening, I think we're all, we're making up a, a simple form, uh, that has all the information on it. So, uh, I don't want to have the wrong idea here, the COVID nineteen complaints were documented, but in a sense, probably not properly. We, hindsight, I think two thousand twenty should have had a, had a COVID nineteen reporting sheet. Uh, and, and just saying again, there is no potential desire to skirt public records. There's, that's not our desire at all, it's not this Congress' desire at all to try to skirt, uh, public records, uh, law. And then again, I just, I just think for next meeting, Council will have to think seriously when it says, and to Mr. Gates' point, uh, when the complaint of a nuisance, uh, in order to investigate a complaint of nuisance, the Health Commissioner is, as they shall record for public record the name of the complainant. And that's just something to really think about. Uh, because the word shall is pretty strong. There is a fear on the Health Department's side, uh, that that will, uh, again, cut down on, on, on actual complainants registering that complaint. Or do we move forward and say, if you don't, if you say, I want to remain anonymous, what do we do with that? So that's just a question to be answered in the future. If we say, we need your name, they say, I don't want to give my name, what do we do with that complaint? And so that's just something to think about in the future. So those are just some things from the Health Department's, uh, standpoint, but, uh, by next meeting, um, we can probably copy off a few examples of the complaints that were kept track of, and some of the email trails back and forth, uh, the follow-ups for the COVID nineteenth's in particular, and I'll bring in that complaint policy to show how we do that, uh, for nuisance complaints, uh, or maybe other complaints, but we really did not have a purely COVID nineteen complaint, um, document. Yes, Mr. Martin.
I would say that in general, for complaints that come before City Council, uh, you know, weed violations, people have trash in New York, I have never had a problem with someone giving me their name and, and reporting that. I have a pretty, um, have, yeah, internal councilman policy that if you leave me a message on my answering machine and you don't say your name, uh, then I'm not going to necessarily follow up with the complaint. I know others have had the same belief. Uh, if someone is ranting and raving with me on the phone and they're not willing to, you know, tell me who's, and who am I actually speaking with? There, um, there, I, I've never really had an issue with people giving me their names to complain about, you know, my neighbor's not mowing his yard, it's, it's, uh, you know, it's knee-high and it's the Fourth of July, it's just ridiculous, uh, it's not, not corn. Uh, and I have had, you know, people reporting junk in people's driveways, et cetera, I've never had an issue. I, I really don't think it's going to tamp down, um, uh, on the authentic, um, complaints. In where areas that it does tamp down, it's going to tamp out on the, uh, people trying to get back to people through complaint. And the problem i- in this, uh, COVID crisis that we find ourselves is that the mechanisms that the state has put in place doesn't allow for due process, and so it has to start at the local level. One instance is dealing with, um, violations of, that go before, uh, violations of a restaurant that is doing, that go before the liquor board. You know, when those violations come in, they are being emailed to the representative of the liquor board, saying that this is a, a violation that we have, um...
Excuse me, Mayor, point of order, I, I, I appreciate the story, but I don't believe it's particularly germane to this ordinance here. I think the members have gone far afield in this case.
Few, few that were complained, uh, I understand, so, we could probably save, when we see all the documentation next week, we can continue that conversation. But I think yours being of frivolous complaints or injurious complaints, uh, but maybe we develop that next.
Specifically to the Health Department. So, I mean, I don't, I understand how that wouldn't be germane to the conversation when we're dealing with specifically complaints to the Health Department and the Health Commissioner. I mean, I can't speak about the process of why this legislation came to be in the first place, as the person who offered the legislation, that I don't understandably understand the complaint to germane. And we, of course, we can waste another sixty-five seconds on whether this is germane or not, uh, but maybe, uh, fellow councilmen should just let me continue, as we've given a lot of, uh, leeway on germaneness of topics by a lot of council members, that I haven't necessarily taken advantage of in years. I'm just using...
Mayor, unless my hearing is, is deceiving me, the, the gentleman was talking about restaurants and the state liquor board. And now, whether those provide due process or not, I, you know, I don't know, but that's, you know, that is beyond the, the scope of, of the City Council and this piece of legislation.
By the way, this is actually, our Health Department did send that to the liquor board. It was Ms. Conrad that sent that complaint to the liquor board, because a, a complaint came in from a citizen. So, I, I believe it is germane to the conversation. Mr. Martin.
I'll look forward to what the administration produces, and, uh, we can discuss this at second reading if this council sees it.
And in further discussion, Mr. Gates.
Mayor, uh, Mr. Martin made the reference to a conversation at the law director about, uh, whistleblower, uh, provisions in the revised code. I ask if it'd be so, uh, so kind as to, uh, forward that to the, you know, the specific revised code section.
All right. I shall. Thank you. And further discussion. Roll call, please.
Mr. Martin.
Yay.
Mr. McLaughlin.
Yay.
Mr. Robb.
Yay.
Mr. Roberts.
Yay.
Mr. Gates.
Yay.
Ordinance number fifteen, two thousand twenty passes as first reading.
Resolution number twenty-four, two thousand twenty, authorizing the mayor as Director of Public Service to purchase a two thousand twenty-one bucket truck to the State of Ohio procurement of state term schedule for the Division of Electricity and Communications Department.
Should we take out the pad?
Second. We have a motion by Mr. Roberts and a second by Mr. Martin for the passage of Resolution twenty-four, two thousand twenty, discussion. Mr. Martin.
Uh, Mr. Unsmann sent me, uh, a statement on the, uh, bucket truck legislation that he asked me to, uh, convey to, um, council. Says the, uh, truck replaces a nineteen ninety-four bucket truck that was recently sold. Truck is made to the lineman's specifications for our electric distribution system. The truck isn't a lot item as it is built to the design. Truck can take up to eight months to build, we're expecting to be invoiced next year. So there could be a good possibility we will need to carry over the appropriations fiscal year two, twenty twenty-one. And that's just an extension of what was given in, uh, my, uh, last report, uh, from the utilities this recent meeting, but, uh, I wanted to make sure that I, uh, have that council attention since, for a reminder, as it is before we begin this evening.
And in further discussion. Roll call, please.
Mr. Martin.
Yay.
Mr. McLaughlin.
Yay.
Mr. Robb.
Yay.
Mr. Roberts.
Yay.
Mr. Gates.
Yay.
Resolution number twenty-four, two thousand twenty passes.
Resolution number twenty-five, two thousand twenty, authorizing the mayor as Director of Public Safety to enter into an agreement for the housing of prisoners.
Some of it.
Second. We have a motion by Mr. Gates and a second by Mr. Martin for the passage of Resolution number twenty-five, two thousand twenty, discussion. Mr. Gates.
Mayor, I read through the, the contract that's attached to it. Uh, if I were a gate breaker, I would be ashamed of the grammar and errors in this contract, so bear with me as we go through. Uh, I'm going to assume that this is, was cranked up from Knox County, Chuck McConville, the prosecutor, yes, an intern, whatever, but this, we'll go through here. And I, and this is unanimous consent, and that's it. Uh, the second line down, um, this reads, between the county slash city of Shelby Police Department, uh, I move, arise unanimous consent to remove the, uh, word county and the slash that follows it, and to remove police department. So it reads between the city of Shelby. Um, the next line, uh, it says by its, it is Board of County Commissioners, various points, its, I-T-S, no apostrophe. Uh, if we go down to paragraph number one, there's two instances, uh, about the seventh line down and about the tenth line down, where it says, out of county, those should be hyphenated, it should be out hyphen of hyphen county in both instances. I'm not going to get into the Oxford comma just to save time. Going on to page two, and, uh, item number five, the second line down, it says, makes reference to a LEADS terminal number, it has LEADS, capital L-E-A-D-S, LEADS is an acronym for law enforcement and, uh, and Mr. Robb can tell us what the rest of is, but it's, 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 should be all five capital letters. Uh, going down into item seven, uh, the fourth line down, again, we have I-T apostrophe S, and it should be this I-T-S. If we go on to the final page, page four of four, where we have the signature lines, where we have Knox County on the left, they're officials, and it should be City of Shelby on the right side, and, uh, then the, uh, all the lines removed except the line above the word mayor. And it probably should say mayor slash Director of Public Safety, since that's the capacity which you'll sign this, if the legislation passes.
Yes.
I did have one positive thing to say here, I mean, that's, uh, again, item number two, talks about the fee being fifty dollars, uh, the last part, uh, should the actual cost of prisoner care exceed the sum of fifty, fifty dollars per day? Knox County should notify agency, that's us, in writing, and the two parties may mutually agree to increase that, and if I, I wrote good in the margin there, again, we may not mutually agree, but that remains to be seen. So, as far as substance, I like it, as far as, uh, mechanics, there's a lot to be desired.
Thank you, sir. Heard all the, um, uh, changes to be made to the contract, I, uh, unanimous consent, are there any, uh, adjustments of those being made? Nothing made as described. Further discussion. Mr. Robb, do you have anything to add on this?
Not really, Your Honor, um. Chief, Chief Holmes has a mutual acquaintance at the Knox County Sheriff's Department, um, that he reached out to, it's actually Dave, um, Sheriff Dave Shaper, and asked him if he would agree to look into prisoner housing, he detailed need to do that, so, um, very competitive rates, um, worth, worth the gas back and forth, so, um, they're a hundred bed facility, they can't guarantee bed space, but, uh, they're willing to work with us once COVID nineteen kind of settles, they start accepting outside housing, they're willing to work with us and, and maybe offset some of our outside prisoner housing.
Thank you.
That's the lowest rate, um, of all the contracts, Rich County being the highest, at eighty-seven dollars and some change, um, they're at fifty dollars, so I think the next one up is about fifty-five or fifty-seven.
Thank you.
Per day.
Yes. Thanks. And in further discussion. Roll call, please.
Mr. Martin.
Yay.
Mr. McLaughlin.
Yay.
Mr. Robb.
Yay.
Mr. Roberts.
Yay.
Mr. Gates.
Yay.
Resolution number twenty-five, two thousand twenty passes.
Resolution number twenty-six, two thousand twenty, authorizing the city of Shelby to enter into an agreement with Lloyd Rebar Company LLC and Shelby Iron Works Properties LLC for a new light manufacturing and warehousing addition pursuant to chapter five thousand seven hundred and nine of the Ohio revised code, Enterprise Zones.
Remove.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Martin and a second by Mr. McLaughlin for the passage of Resolution twenty-six, two thousand twenty, discussion. Mr. Gates.
Mayor, I, we've got two, two LLCs listed here, and, and I'm curious, what's the relationship between those two?
Mr. Gates, you work on this one, uh...
Um, if I'm not mistaken, he used the, uh, the Shelby Iron Works for the property owner part of it, and the Lloyd Rebar is like a, is the actual business that's on the property and so forth.
Further discussion. Mr. Gates.
Mayor, I'm looking at the, uh, it's the, you know, first attachment, the Enterprise Zone Agreement, and the, the agreement, the, the first paragraph is between the city of Shelby and, and the two LLCs, but when I get down to, it's on page nine, uh, item eighteen, then the, then the county commissioners jump into this agreement. You know, if, if the agreement's between the city and the company, I, why are the commissioners there? At page eleven, there's signature pages for the commissioners.
Mr. Gates. Um, I remember doing this before, and with the, uh, the law is, the, once this is submitted to the commissioners, they leave the language in there, is they shall approve it, but the reason why they're in there is obviously because they're, the income tax, or not the thing with the property taxes and so forth, are being abated, uh, through this enterprise zone area, so they are, and we had to go to the commissioners to get the area approved, and I believe they're, they're, they're in part of the whole process.
Thank you. Mr. Gates.
One last question, uh, maybe, is, is there any revenue sharing here with the Jackson Township?
Mr. Gates.
No, sir.
That's a good answer.
Any further discussion? This, um, this was kind of the original plan, and as I mentioned, if I, if you don't mind, just the, the idea of twenty-eight thousand square foot, uh, addition, uh, seven new permanent full-time employees, some three hundred thousand dollar income tax addition to the city, um, it's just, it's just a good thing all the way around, and glad to see this, uh, plan coming to fruition so quickly with that business. Mr. Gates.
And also, to, um, like, thanks for that, two school boards, Shelby City Schools and Pioneer, uh, when we submitted, uh, obviously, whenever these come up, they want them done right away, and both school boards, uh, jumped right to, got it on their next meeting, and both approved them, and you can see in the, uh... And you can see in the documents on there what their compensation is for that, so it's good and great.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Martin.
Yay.
Mr. McLaughlin.
Yay.
Mr. Robb.
Yay.
Mr. Roberts.
Yay.
Mr. Gates.
Yay.
Resolution number twenty-six, two thousand twenty passes.
Resolution number twenty-seven, two thousand twenty. Approving the plans and specifications and authorizing the mayor as director of public service to advertise for bids and enter into a contract for the two thousand twenty paving project within the city of Shelby, Ohio, and declaring an emergency.
Do you think the resolution we decked out passed?
Second. You have a motion by Mr. Gates and a second by Mr. Martin, for the passage of resolution twenty-seven, two thousand twenty. Discussion? Mr. Gates.
This was on our ongoing list and our, back to our five-year plan, which has been amended because of lower revenues coming in and so forth, but this would get Broadway completed from the CSS tracks to Main Street, and we do have the two all-urban streets in it, if we do get a good deal. As part of this, which is also expensive too, is the, all of the curb ramps would be ADA compliant, which is a requirement by the higher revise code and the American Disabilities
Mr. Gates.
Do we have a feel what asphalt prices are doing?
I call around to all of the other agencies, the cities and villages, all of them putting their bids out before COVID happened, so we're going to be the one, I guess in this case, we could be unfortunate or fortunate because of that, so we will see here.
Thank you. Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Martin.
Yay.
Mr. McLaughlin.
Yay.
Mr. Robb.
Yay.
Mr. Roberts.
Yay.
Mr. Gates.
Yay.
Resolution number twenty-seven, two thousand twenty passes. Forward to miscellaneous business. Miscellaneous business, we brought forward, council will see. Mr. Martin.
Mayor, there comes certain points where the current events of the day becomes such that we feel a need to kind of speak out, and obviously, there's a lot of turmoil going on in our country right now. And I, at risk of being a little too emotional discussing some of the things of the day, I would like to read kind of a statement dealing with the current situation in our country. Life is rarely easy or simple, but we try to make it so. We try to make shortcuts. It is almost in our nature. I live in a town, of course, and I represent a district that is ninety-eight percent white. My wife is white, and we have seven children who are white as well, six biological, and of course, one adopted. Yet, I have numerous cousins who are African-American, Spanish-American, Asian-American, and we have three foster daughters, of course, that are colored as well. Chances are that I will have a daughter or a son-in-law that is a person of color, and that means that I will have brain kids of all different color. I go to a church that isn't one shade of color, but a diverse and eclectic, an eclectic group of sinners trying to live out God's grace in our lives. I have had great friends throughout the years, good and godly men of all colors who have spoken to my life at different times. What a blessing that I don't have any of those shortcuts in my life. Racism is a scourge on our country because it first denies the humanity of someone who is an image bearer of Christ, but second, it robs the person who is racist of experiencing the rich relationships across the tapestry of God's creation. I believe we can do better, and I feel we must do better, but true change only happens with relationship, and starting with our common bonds, the first one being that we are all created in God's image. So I invite all of us to pray and ask the Holy Spirit to guide us, all in what we can do to promote the beauty of His creation, and to speak against the one who seeks to kill, steal, and destroy our soul as a country in all respects. That is my prayer, Mayor, and I hope that it will strike a chord with those around us. I'll say today, I was praying for our country. As you know, I am a man of faith, and I think that is that faith that gets us through trying in difficult times, but also, I believe in the wisdom of the ages providing us answers. And I was praying today, just about the situation going on in our country and the different things going on around us, and the Lord laid on, laid on my heart, a friend from high school, who I hadn't spoke to in a while, or Facebook friends, who I hadn't spoke to in a while. He's an African-American student, he was one of the few African-American students in my high school when I was in Nebraska, and laid him on my heart to pray for him, and I did. Come to find out, he's in Omaha, and you know, some of the things going on there. And I just reached out to him and told him that, you know, I know we don't agree politically very much, but the Lord laid it on my heart, and I just wanted to pray for you. I hope that in this state, that all of us can come to the table and pray that God puts certain people on our hearts. We don't know what they're going through. We don't know whether bitterness is about to turn to hatred. We don't know if they've lost a job during this pandemic, and they're at their last ends, and the only way out is a way out for them. We just don't know, and I just pray that we would all be sensitive to God's will in our life, and that He will put people on our minds and on our hearts that are in this difficult time. And it's only when we are open to what God can do in our lives truly, that we can really start to see the divisions in our country heal. A firm believer in that, and I know there may be people that are listening to this that don't believe in that, but I'm a firm believer that the only thing that gives us the healing quality is the healing quality of God. I know in my life, I was, still am, a sinner, not deserving of anything. And in fact, one of my favorite song lyrics is that the beauty of grace is that it makes life not fair, because what's fair for me is definitely ruin and death. But through the saving power of Jesus Christ in my life, I have been able to experience life, and life more abundantly than I ever could possibly deserve, whether it's the ten kids that call me dad, or the countless friends, or even the relationships I've been able to build here in this city, and even, dare I say, on this council, much more than I could deserve. And I feel that if we have that humility, and we ask God for His wisdom, His direction, He'll give it to us, and when He does, He'll truly, truly use us to heal our needs. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. We appreciate those comments. Another business? Mr. Page.
Mayor, the council chair.
Second. You have a motion on Mr. Gates and a second on Mr. Roberts for adjournment. Roll call, please.
Mr. Martin.
Yay.
Mr. McLaughlin.
Yay.
Mr. Robb.
Yay.
Mr. Roberts.
Yay.
Mr. Gates.
Yay.
Council adjournments at eight twenty-four.